A couple of presentations. One, we're going to be hearing from our consultant team for the 14th Warlick and Old Chaney Project that we're really excited about. Kyle Anderson and Rick Hayden are here from FHU, and we also have Steve Wolf from JEO, and they've partnered up to give you a presentation on this important project. And we'll hear from them. And then following that, we'd like Thomas Schaefer to jump up and tell you a little bit about the 2017 construction projects. And that's what this big sign relates to. So he'll tell you a little bit about our Lincoln on the Move initiative today. So jumping back into the 14th Street project, how many have been through this process? When we, I'm, we were trying to count how many of the council people today are new to this project or were involved when we had the big design competition. I know Cindy maybe-
We were all here.
You were all here. Very good.
No, except for Cindy. She wasn't.
I think Cindy's, okay. So this is exciting because we get to show Cindy what's, what's going on here. But we did something pretty extraordinary. We did a design competition. We'd never tried that before. But Thomas came to us with that proposal, and we thought, what a neat idea for an important intersection. It attracted eight proposals representing 20 firms, and we interviewed four teams. We selected three teams to provide solutions, and they had a four-month schedule to come up with these solutions and a simulation for their, how they would approach this intersection. Well, we ultimately selected FHU and JEO team because of their roundabout concept, which I'll have them talk more specifically about. But what's important about that selection is that we had certain project goals, and we'll come back to how we're meeting those goals with this proposal. Enhance the safety in the area, increase the capacity, minimize the right-of-way impacts. We have a lot of people who live around this intersection, including some really important businesses, Fiserv and Design Data. Make this cost-effective. Also, oh, John made it. Wonderful. I'll slow down a little bit.
Thank you very much.
As we talked about-
I love you for that.
These guys, okay. And also accommodate multimodal. There's pet and bike movements in this area. Incorporate sustainable elements. There'll be some place-making or project aesthetics, and then meet a schedule. Those were the project goals, and we selected a firm that we believed could bring all of those goals together. So I'd like to invite Kyle and Steve to come up and talk through that for you.
Okay. Well, I think the first thing, as Mickey pointed out about the design competition, is to not just look at this project where it is today, but really understand where it came from and why even the design competition. So, you know, over roughly about a 15-year period, the city of Lincoln had approached improving this intersection because the citizens down there are demanding something. They consider it being one of the worst congested intersections in the city. And every time the city had gone to come up with an idea, one set of stakeholders within that project area and another ended up kind of trying to push back and shoot it down. And that's effectively what happened. So the city spent tens of thousands of dollars on designs that ended up not going anywhere. And the last one, I think, is pretty monumental in the sense that Fiserv, one of your major employers here in Lincoln, actually threatened to move out of the city if that project that was on the table at that time went forward. And they got the governor of Nebraska involved in that. So that's a little extreme. So, you know, trying to look at what happened there, we wanted to really study what was the best foot forward. And again, the design competition was a brilliant idea to not only come up with some new concepts, but to really take another run at actually getting the project stakeholders involved in helping to shape and form what would ultimately hopefully be done here. So that's exactly what happened. So in addition to the goals that the city laid out, after working very closely with all the stakeholders that are, you know, that have to live or work immediately in that project area, they also identified additional priorities that they wanted to make sure the city considered in moving forward. So we combined those with the, with the goals as well as these priorities, and that's really where this concept that you see today really came from. And I think what ends up happening there is, from that merger, the way the public was so involved, we actually have demand for this project now. No one in that area is fighting this. Everybody wants this to get done, and they're very excited. So, some of the things, what were existing concerns that we tried to overcome in, in working with the citizens to actually help us figure this out? Obviously, the congestion safety concerns have been a longstanding thing. It actually was one of, and still is really to this day, one of the most dreaded intersections in the city. People would prefer not to negotiate it, but it's hard to get from point A to B for some folks without going through it. They're very concerned about the fact that the sidewalks and the trails, there's just a hard severing of the, of the, of the trails and the sidewalks in the area, and that's something they want to have addressed through this, and then by virtue of that, make it safer for pedestrians and bikers to get through this intersection. So, some other things that the stakeholders told us, they just, they felt that, you know, just traditional intersections just not going to work here because it's a very interesting configuration the way it is now. They wanted the city and the design teams to be very innovative and take a kind of a new approach to things and try something new, and certainly make this perhaps a nice, kind of a landmark gateway into that part of the city, southwest part of the city. And so they really wanted to see some imagination and some creativity. Aesthetics is a big issue as well, again, to help kind of create that, that impression that it's not just a boring old intersection, but it's something that's highly functional and also kind of attractive to, to approach. And then the other thing that I thought was really important too, is kind of tightfisted as taxpayers tend to be, they really did not want the city to do a Band-Aid. They did not want some incremental Band-Aid approach to fixing this intersection. They really wanted to see the city make, the city make a very serious step in making this a long-term solution. And you'll find that this project design actually exceeds the life expectancy that was identified as part of the goals of the project. And I certainly think that they, the city, the citizens themselves, the city of Lincoln, do something bold here. And I think all those priorities and the goals are being met through this design. And Kyle will share more with you on how that was done.
Thanks. So hopefully it gives you a little bit of background or refreshes your memory on some of the discussion. I wanted to orient you a little bit on the project because all of our drawings will be this configuration. North is up. Old Chaney Road is running east-west through here. 14th Street coming through here. The Kensington Place, Fiserv, Design Data. So just to give you some orientation there. So as we went through the process, one of the things that we learned at the end of the competition was all of the teams came to the same conclusion that there's a very heavy north-south-east-west conflict there, and that you needed to have some sort of a grade separation somewhere in that vicinity to be able to get it to work. So one of the reasons that we were driven towards this elevated roundabout is it's really just an interchange, a way to get those movements separated, but it gives us a very compact footprint. So it doesn't take a lot of the adjacent properties to be able to do that. So right at the heart of the intersection, we've reduced it from three intersections down to two. It does allow for some redundant movements, but really the priority movements, I'll go through it a little bit later, are very simplistic and easy to follow. We do improve bicycle pedestrian connectivity through there, and I'll show you some of the examples of what those improvements are going to be. And just wanted to point out too, again, for orientation, that the T-intersection really handles three legs of the intersection. Old Chaney Road to the east, Warlick Boulevard to the southwest, and 14th Street to the north. The roundabout really handles 14th Street to the south. And that's, even though you can get other places, those are really the primary movements on there. So I do want to mention some of the value engineering that's been going on since we've gotten into the preliminary design. The original concept provided a direct connection from Warlick Boulevard going east on Old Chaney, and 14th Street teed in from the north. But as we got started, several years after the design competition, we updated the traffic counts, new traffic forecasts, started working with the city staff on some of the design elements, typical cross-sections and those things. And the impacts to the adjacent properties were getting a little bit larger than what we'd at first anticipated. And as Mickey pointed out, that was one of the key goals of the project, was trying to keep that compact. So as we went through our internal value engineering process, we took a look and decided that, you know, we really could maybe change that configuration of the T-intersection down below and get it to fit more tightly within the existing right-of-way. So now the direct connection would be from Warlick Boulevard to the north on 14th, very similar to what's there today. So again, there's some even benefits of, of people being used to driving in that direction. And then Old Chaney Road tees in to the east from there. So some of the benefits of that, we were able to actually provide dual lanes for the major movements of the T-intersection, and with that original concept we weren't. It also increases that intersection spacing from Warlick Boulevard to 16th. So that helps us with weaving movements, queue lengths of vehicles at the red lights. It also increases the distance from the elevated roundabout down to the two Fiserv driveways down to the south. So anytime you can increase that distance between adjacent intersections, this can be a big improvement. We've reduced the right-of-way impacts to the northwest corner of these properties. We were into four of those properties pretty significantly. Now it looks like although there might be a need for some temporary easements, we should be able to stay out of their property acquisitions in that corner. And then by shifting the roundabout and the intersection a little bit to the northwest, we provided some very significant constructability improvements where we can keep Old Chaney Road and 14th Street open during the construction of most of the roundabout and the intersections. So we have a very long construction phase during that time. These are some of the materials we'll be providing at the public meeting next week. Again, trying to simplify with folks on how to navigate through the intersections. If you're northbound on 14th, for example, how you would go up in the roundabout to get to Warlick, or northbound on 14th, or using the T-intersection down below. And I won't go through all of those movements, but part of our, our mission next week is to help simplify traveling through this intersection with the general public. And we have some other graphics you'll see in a moment that'll help that as well. So real quickly, just a few of the key intersection and roadway configuration improvements. This is the south leg of 14th Street. We'll be providing a roundabout at the intersection with Fiserv and Design Data on the south end of the graphic. That northern driveway into Fiserv though, as we were meeting with them, they actually came to us and suggested that we eliminate the inbound movement of their driveway and make it just a right-out. And they would have their employees and customers come down to the roundabout down here to be able to get in. So we thought that was a very positive thing, that one of the major stakeholders in the area was coming to us and saying, hey, we're willing to give up this movement because we're pleased with what we're getting down here at that further intersection down. We also have a northbound right-turn lane to continue to the east on Old Chaney. That'll be implemented as well. The north leg of 14th Street at the intersection of the Salt Valley View, we'll be keeping that, those intersection movements the same as you have today. Access to Kensington Place into, by scooters and Dairy Queen, will be only from the roundabout ramp. And we've had a chance to visit with the owners there, and they're comfortable with that, and they understand that we can't make that connection to the other part of the roadway there. And then finally, we'll be merging traffic from the T-intersection and the roundabout ramps by the time we get up to Salt Valley View. And so you've got that, some of that movement happening there today. It'll be very similar in that sense. Old Chaney Road to the east, we are rebuilding the intersection with 16th Street, providing a traffic signal and adding some additional lanes for capacity. The Design Data drive coming out will be a right-out only coming out, and there'll be limited right turns coming in only from that movement from 14th Street, but not from the other leg of that. They'll have to go down and in through that roundabout in the south. We are providing a right-turn lane for the heavy right-turn movement on 16th Street, and we're also introducing a westbound through lane to get up into the roundabout. So those are a few of the key elements that are going on there. One of the things that we heard during the design competition and even since then is the importance to de-emphasize traffic flow in Old Chaney going to the west. We've got the railroad crossing a little bit further to the west. We're going through Wilderness Park. There's a lot of residential driveways. So they really wanted to take the heavy traffic movements off of that part of Old Chaney. So to give them access though, we need to provide a connection from Warlick Boulevard over Old Chaney. It's going to be on the south side behind Christ Place Church. We'll provide a roundabout intersection with Warlick Boulevard with that new connection. And this should really help eliminate the volume of traffic that's going on Old Chaney and even the cut-through traffic that the church currently deals with now. The active transportation element, the bike and pet connections, I wanted to point out, the major feature is this east-west connection from the Rock Island Trail to the Jamaica North Trail that will generally be along the east, or the Old Chaney Road alignment. We will be providing great separations underneath the roundabout and a signalized crossing at the T-intersection. So we'll have a safe crossing for bicyclists and pedestrians. And then, trying a little hard to see, there's little gold lines through here. Those are sidewalk connections that we heard loud and clear from stakeholders and the people that live in the area that there's a lot of gaps in connectivity for pedestrians walking down the streets. So this, this really would solve a lot of those issues and connect those elements up. And Steve will bring up, up to date a little bit on what's happened with recent public development activities.
Okay. So one of the things that's continued since the design competition was the fact of just a very high touch with the, with the most affected stakeholders, the neighborhood associations, the businesses, the tenants, and some of the advocacy groups. So as the FHU was refining the design, you can see, like, you start trying to fix something, you start squeezing on a balloon, you got like a little bulge over here or something. And so when we would refine the designs, they would, we would sit down with those individual property owners and say, here's what we're trying to do, and get their feedback, and, and get that, that's kind of really the buy-in. And I think one of the things that's fantastic about this, for example, Fiserv, one of the major things with the previous thing that they were fighting is the, you know, the easements that they would have to give up. And now they are willingly giving up easement for this project where before they said, you know, we're going to move out of town if you take any of the property. So that's one thing that's happened, but because of this very high level of collaboration that we're having with them. We've met with the neighborhood associations, and, and they are still completely on board with this. And we've also met with the advocacy groups. And what I mean by that is like the friends of Wilderness Park. They've been very involved in our discussions of what we're doing, as well as the bike and pet groups. And so this, this has really affected everybody that are the major users and those that are most impacted by this project. And we're really excited that every last one of them is completely on board with this project, and they really want to see it get done. The other thing that we do after we've met with them individually is we get them back together as a group so that they can all hear and see and talk to each other and make sure there's total transparency in how we're moving this design forward so that if one stakeholder wanted something, they can hear from the other side, like, why did you do this? And they can hear each other out. So that's kept everybody on board as well. And then other things we've done to keep the general public involved is we've maintained a project website specifically for this project, tried to give it some distinctive branding. And because we think this is a landmark project, we even got a, you know, a little lot logo here. It's kind of an icon for the project. So we've done that too, just to make sure this thing really stands out if people are looking for information from the city's website. So just to kind of an update, so the, the latest thing we did was we had a big open house public meeting, kind of to get the, the concept out there in front of the public again. That was held a little less than a year ago. We had 140 people show up, and, and out of that, we had 42 comments. And I know there's different ways to judge that, but I think you know that you tend to hear from people if they're probably not liking something so much. So we'd like to think that, oh, you know, 98 people showed up and really liked what they saw because they didn't leave any comments. But, but what's more interesting, when you actually start digging into the comments that were left behind, it was good to see that most of the people that did remark on this do live in the area, they, or they have to traverse the area to get from point A to B. I thought the really cool thing is that the top right-hand comment was they are excited for this project and they want to see it get done. So if, if the general thing is if people are leaving comments because they're dissatisfied, what we actually saw are people are excited to see this get done. And then the other big question that everybody has is when is this going to get finished? They're, they're kind of interested about the construction and when they're going to see the finished product. So our next public open house meeting is on the 23rd. It'll be at Southwest High School. It's a great place to have meetings. That's when we had the design competition. The meetings were held there for that. We're excited about the fact that this project's actually three months ahead of schedule. So things are moving along quite well. And the other thing we're really excited about, the biggest question, and then one of the things we want to really demonstrate at this next public meeting, and we'll give you a preview now, is not so much the design, but how do you negotiate it? How do you travel through this? So we've created animation, 3D animation, to help the drivers of Lincoln, the stakeholders understand how easy it is to actually go through this intersection. And with that, we'll show you a clip.
So it gives you a good aerial view and kind of see how the thing fits together, a little bit clearer picture of what that finished product would look like.
And so we regenerated a clip. So you saw the static images of the priority movements, and we have a, a video animation for each priority movement to help people understand this. And we'll make sure that's, that's only going to be on play at the public open house, but we'll also have that on the project website for the city and, and get that out there so people can see how really easy it is to get through this really cool design.
So I'll give you a quick update on our construction cost estimate and schedule, and we'll be ready for some questions. We turned in the preliminary design plans in December, so 30% design plans. Our latest probable construction costs are a little over $20 million. Total project costs of a little under $25 million. We've also updated our benefit cost analysis figures. So we typically look at a 20, 25-year horizon. In this case, we're looking at 25 years from the year 2020 to 2045. And over that 25-year period, we're anticipating a little over $200 million in user travel time and fuel costs savings over that 25-year period. So if you compare that to the $25 million project costs, we have a benefit cost ratio of a little bit greater than 8.0 on the project. To give you a little bit of a comparison, a lot of cities' three-intersection type projects might be just lucky to get, even see 2.0 in terms of a benefit cost ratio. So we're seeing some very big benefits. One thing I want to point out with regard to the costs, while people may view this as a simple intersection project, in fact, we're rebuilding two to three miles of arterial streets, four-lane arterial streets between Warlick Boulevard and 14th Street and parts of Old Chaney, and the new connection from Old Chaney to, to Warlick. And seven total intersections are being rebuilt through this area. So it's much more than just one little point. It's really a system of roadway improvements and painting projects that would need to be done.
Kyle, could you enumerate what's, makes up that 206 million in benefits? Certain itemization?
Yeah, it's primarily travel time savings and fuel costs. So we run our analysis of the no-build condition versus the build, and our traffic model will tell us how much delay people will sit, and then we use standard wage criteria for figuring out a dollars per hour in savings for that. And then the fuel cost is based on, you know, today's price per gallon and how many gallons we can save by eliminating the congestion and the delays.
Do you have an itemization for that?
I do, and that's something we could probably provide for you after the meeting.
Thank you.
You bet. And then just finally, on, on the schedule, Steve mentioned, we had the first meeting back in June, submitted the plans in December. Our next public meeting is next, next week on the 23rd at Southwest High School. And then right after that, we'll dive into final design of the project, wrap that up towards the end of the year, go back to the public like one last time, say, okay, here's our final plans, these are the impacts, the final costs, about a year from now. Then we're pegged to start utility relocation in 2019, and construction on the actual roadway improvements would begin in the end of 2019. We do have a website. Encourage you to, to get on it. It's easy to remember. 14tholdchaney.com, one word. And we'll be updating it with all of the public meeting graphics, probably the day of the meeting. We don't want to get too much out there ahead of the meeting, but you'll be seeing a lot of updates to that website here shortly. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Roy's and John?
You mentioned grade separation for a trail, a trail that's going through.
Yes.
How, how's that going to look?
Yeah. Let me go back to one of the other drawings. Why, there, that's probably the best. Even though this configuration is a little different, this does show, it's, right now we're anticipating a pre-cast box that will be in between the two bridges, for example. And so they'll, we're working hard to make sure we've got a good line of sight so it doesn't feel like a dark tunnel can see from one end to the other. And there's not very long segment too. It's only about a two-lane road up above it. So it's a short segment, and there'd be one on each side of that north leg of 14th Street.
So, but it would cross the street there in the T?
Right. So it'd be a traffic signal here and a crossing, so they'd be able to cross with a walk signal there.
John?
I'll follow up on that for my other question. Does the vehicular traffic control the stoplight, or are the bicycles and pedestrians?
It would be similar to our other locations throughout the city. So normal conditions would be that the vehicles would, but when you push the indication, then that would override that timing to give enough time for the pedestrians to be able to cross.
I would think with that one animation you showed of Warlick to 14th, it would impede that speed. I always look at preventative maintenance or maintenance down the road, what we can do today. You've got, what, three bridges in this essentially for that roundabout? Talk to us a little bit about how we can maintain this, because with an investment like this, we'd like to.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. We actually had a, a structure, a structures analysis meeting, provided city staff with a few different options on retaining walls in the bridges. And the decision coming out of the meeting is exactly your point. If you're going to make an investment in this intersection, you don't want to have to deal with sagging retaining walls or even bridge abutments where you've got joint issues there, where you've got, you know, if you were to get in, although most people wouldn't go all the way around the circle, you know, potentially six different joints. So what we had suggested was that the bridges be made out of steel, be steel bridges, and that the retaining walls on the inside of the diameter, that those would be cast-in-place concrete, reinforced concrete instead of the segmented walls. And I know that when you get to a certain height, I think the city has had some long-term maintenance issues with those. So that interior ring would all be cast in place. The exterior walls, where you're going from zero up to another height, we would probably be looking at those, those block walls, those segmented walls on some of those. But we could provide an option to the contractor as well on that. And then to take care of the fill sections in between the bridges, we're recommending something called cellular concrete that you don't have to worry about putting in dirt and getting good compaction levels, and then having differential settlement between the bridge abutments and the bridge itself. So the cellular concrete will harden, and in essence, in that ring, give you a nice solid block that is, is going to maintain its, its elevations throughout the life of the project. So, so those are some long-term sustainability things that, I will say, you spend a little bit more money upfront. So, so those are some long-term sustainability things that, I will say, you spend a little bit more money upfront, but you eliminate those long-term maintenance issues down the road.
If I could to follow up on the cellulose or whatever?
Cellular concrete.
Cellular, pardon me. I would assume you'd still compact it to try to not get a big cavity out of there.
Oh, absolutely, you still would compact the base and then you fill that up from there.
And the second question is, what type of cost differential is there between the block and the poured concrete?
I don't know if I have that number off the top of my head, but we could provide that to you.
Just a ratio maybe between one or the other or the?
Thomas, what have you seen in some of your bids? It's not double, but it could add another 20 to 40%, depending on the height of the wall.
The poured in places, the more expensive?
Yeah, poured in place. One thing I would like to mention, we have a constructability meeting with AGC and several contractors. And we got a lot of great input from them on different materials to use in the construction of these walls. I will say though, just in disclosure, they would rather not build the cast-in-place walls because it slows them down. They can build these a lot quicker. But again, from the city's perspective, we're looking at long-term sustainability and maintenance issue.
Thank you.
No questions? I have a few. Earlier in one of the aerial views, it showed the westbound traffic in Old Chaney going north on 14th and it looked like it was coming really close to an existing structure on the east side. Is it, can you speak a little bit to that and what's happening there?
Sure, if you could help me with maybe where that was.
There, yeah, I guess there, yeah. It doesn't look as clo, yeah, that corner as I was talking about.
Yeah, so the project does take that end bay of that strip mall that's located right on that corner. And we have met with the owners of Kensington Place and they're aware of that and they're, that's fine. They can replace that bay somewhere else. So that's really probably the major taking that we've got. We're staying out of culvers, even though we're getting away out of the trail.
What is in that last bay?
Um, currently, a kids', yeah.
Kids something.
Yeah, and we talked to the tenant there, she's ready, she's fine with it. She's ready to move, I mean.
And actually, her lease will be out before this is built, too. So she'll probably make that decision ahead of time.
Okay. And then the Rock Island Trail crossing over Old Chaney, are you making any safety improvements there? Because right now, there's nothing there other than just, you know, a little bit of, like a crosswalk. It looks like it's staying that way or?
Yeah, one of the things that we are doing there is, because we're introducing the median and a little bit wider division there between the two travel paths, we're going to create a two-stage crossing. So people coming from the north, for example, would only look to their left for those two lanes crossover and then have a refuge and then look to their right to make, to finish the crossing, instead of shooting all the way across the road in one movement. So that will provide some safety. We have heard from several folks at our public meeting and stakeholders that they would like to see a great separation there. And so right now, we're saying, well, that's not a part of the project and the project costs, but we understand their concern with that.
Yeah, we're kind of listening to their concern.
I just, how are you anticipating maybe any changes in traffic speeds with this new design? Because it is a tough place to cross for the trail right now. And I would imagine this is meant to move people quickly through this intersection more quickly than they move today. Help me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think though, we still have the traffic signal at 16th Street. So in that sense, it's going to be very similar to what it is. You're going to see more volume of traffic. So when the light turns green, there may be a longer wait to get through there. But it's going to be very similar in terms of getting gaps from both directions. There shouldn't be much of a change with that.
Okay.
What if you had them go at 16th and then put an extension of the trail back to the normal trail on the roadway or the railroad?
Up to the north, you're saying?
Well, where the crossing is right now, that they'd have to go, the bifurcated, rather just have them take a right turn on the trail up to the light.
Oh.
At 16th and then they can come across and then?
Oh, have them come up here, cross at 16th.
And then make a trail for them to go back.
We can certainly, I'm sure they'll be in our meeting next week and we can see.
I'm just saying give them a choice.
I think that's the kind of thing where people?
Identify what that cost is. We've had some challenges with separated.
It would be so inconvenient, I can't imagine people would really do it. But to follow up on Roy's question with the bike trail that goes down west on Old Chaney, did you, did you say it was a bike trail or is it, you said grade separated? How is it different, where do the bikes come into contact with car traffic?
It'll be right here at the intersection.
Just at the intersection?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll come and they'll cross 16th Street at the signal and then they'll come underneath the roundabout.
So that's a bike trail right there through the green?
Yeah, light gray wiggly line.
Okay.
And then they'll come underneath, cross, come underneath that part and then continue on west to the northern.
So they're actually separate from the roadway?
From the roundabout, yes.
From the roundabout, but from the roadway on Old Chaney?
No, they would cross that grade at that signal on the Warlick to 14th.
But when they get to west of the roundabout, what is their path? Is it, is it separated from the lane of traffic?
Yes.
Okay, so it's still a trail?
Here, you can kind of see it there.
Yeah.
Since we're severing that connection, we're actually going to incorporate the trail into that existing right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, Old Chaney won't be there like it is now.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you have a question, Cindy?
I do. Can you just show from this perspective where the new right-of-way, all the right-of-way is going to need to be obtained?
Uh, yes.
Apart from the one bay?
Really, this quadrant up here in Kensington Place will be some right-of-way. We've worked with design data and they are willing to allow us to provide the sidewalk through their landscaped area. Right now, there's a sidewalk right up against the street. Not too many people use it, it's, you know, it's always got stuff on it from the street. So this would actually be just an easement to build that sidewalk through their existing landscaping to get you over 16th. The reason they were interested in doing that is they do have people that walk up their private drive to get up into that area. And they really want to give those people a better place to be instead of walking through their private street.
And is that the only right-of-way? I was looking at the three and a half million dollars or three and a quarter million dollars, wondering where that is, other than the bay, if there's any other right-of-way acquisition.
Uh, yeah, Christ Place Church, maybe we've got another view that might show that a little better.
Full disclosure, this is my church.
This is, this is a big chunk of the right-of-way through here. And there are little pieces of corners here and there as we're, like the roundabout at Ficer on 14th Street, around the edges of building the roundabout. We were just chatting about the cost estimate. We want to get updated per square foot prices. Because we were feeling the same thing, the three and a half million seemed a little heavy. But we thought at 30% design, it's probably better to have a little bit of cushion in there as we get more detailed into design, final design, we can tighten that number up.
Thank you.
So I see what you're saying now, there is a chunk of Old Chaney that no longer exists.
Correct, yeah, this piece right here is taken.
That was actually the most dangerous part, like when you're coming, approaching, you couldn't see down to see cars coming, that's great.
And the neighbors couldn't get out of their driveways either.
They couldn't see a car coming, so. If they lived here, they just couldn't pull out because they couldn't see a car coming.
Okay. This may be a question for Public Works, but I wanted to ask about what lessons we've learned as a city from our previous roundabouts and how they were applied in the design of this one? Given, I mean, just at a glance, it looked like all the kind of visual cues are in place through these retaining walls that we had to put in place at North 14th to try and make sure drivers knew where to look. But can you, can you speak to any application of lessons learned or?
I think I'd pull Thomas in too to talk about lessons learned. I think for me, the perspective is we learned a lot at 14th and Superior and even had an independent study done to make adjustments to that intersection. Essentially that we had, we had built to more capacity than that intersection needed. We do think this is right-sized based on what we know from that intersection and what we've learned and how we're scaling back and making those permanent changes yet this year. But Thomas, do you have other?
No, I think you're listening because you've talked about the visual cues and some of that. So that would be one of them and right sizing, as Mickey said, would be the other thing.
Right sizing, yeah.
And with, this is different in the fact that you said, well, right size, well, now you're going to have to expand.
That's exactly what my next question was.
With the T underneath, having redundancy, that will take a lot of the capacity in the future that we won't have to.
Taking a lot of pressure.
Have to rebuild those up top anytime soon. It gets us way beyond where we had hoped to get.
I think in particular, when, on 14th and Superior, what was really interesting was not only how we marked the lanes as people were coming through, but also where they stopped relative to that yield sign and the marker and pulling all the way up. We learned a lot from those small cues when people were traversing that intersection. And so those will be applied, those lessons will be applied here.
One of the thing that, kind of going back to the value engineering element, as we refined the concept, originally, our thought was, well, it'll just be two lanes all the way around. And as we looked at the new forecast for the traffic movements, we realized that on some of these movements, we could neck it down to one lane through here. So we've got two through lanes coming up going north because that's a pretty heavy movement. But we're able to bring that down to just one lane through here on that North Lane. So that's an example of something that actually makes it simpler for people to navigate. They don't have to worry about somebody else coming up and crossing lanes while they're going through the intersection of the roundabout.
John?
Winter weather, we haven't had a lot of snow this year, but how's this work for snow removal? Would they have to scoop it up?
It would be, yeah, similar to any bridge, how we handle bridges. And I don't know, we've had conversations with street maintenance who feel assured that they can plow similarly through here. They'll be able to have stacking areas just like we do for bridges and downtown areas, tight areas where we do the overnight kind of plowing. If we get a ton of snow, we'll do some overnight, what do they call it? The blowing operation, overnight blowing operations as needed. But like you say, I think it's going to be ice with this new kind of temperature that we're having more than a lot of snow. So we'll use our brine and our, and our other materials to.
What types of stormwater drains are you using on that?
What kind of what?
Stormwater drains.
Oh, this is important to John.
Yeah, that's a great question. So actually, we're right in the middle of that design right now. There's a couple of things tied together. Let me find a good view here.
We have a accordance for snowplow targets with our concrete.
Being a high-traffic area, we're going to use the armor, fat armor.
Armor.
Why don't you just go to cast iron for the whole thing like we have on Capital Parkway? Because those have lasted for 60 years.
The ones cast iron with the drain.
I think it's worth it, if you're spending 25 million, you're probably going to have, what, eight or 10 inlets?
Yes.
I'd be worried.
Yes.
So there's two things that we're doing. Number one, everything in this area generally drains to the west through here. So up in this corner of the Christ Place Church and that vacated right-of-way from Old Chaney, that's where we're going to do our major stormwater detention. So we've got a design now that would kind of stair-step down and do a series of bays for that stormwater. And so we're going to be able to capture everything that's going to be coming out of this intersection through that system as it goes down. I did want to point out too, that there is a drainage way that goes through this area where this new road is going to be and it crosses out underneath in this culvert. We've been visiting with the Department of Roads, that culvert is underdesigned now. Don't know how much, you know, you know, strong arming we can do with the department. But we want to let them know that there's not enough capacity there now. So that, that needs to be adjusted. And then we have to do a stream assessment for the impacts on there. That's the work that our hydrology engineers just started in the last couple of weeks. So there'll probably be some stormwater elements in that area as well.
Mickey, how does the cost of the project, as we've been told today, compare with what might already be in the CIP? Or can you talk to us about the financing for this? How much is non-city dollars, what your plan is?
I didn't bring the CIP document with me, but I can, I can spell out how the dollars are phased. And maybe that's in Thomas's mind, but do we have allocation? It's not a federal project.
It's not a federally project, it's all local funding.
We are not going to do any delays with federal project.
We had set aside $10 million previously and the CIP would account for that over 15 million as it says today.
What do you mean?
And we'll need?
The project's $25 million. We put 10 away in the bank years ago.
Gotcha.
And we have 15 million in the CIP to account for in total of 25.
So there's 10 prior appropriation already for the project?
Okay.
And then we'll raise, we'll raise the additional 15 over the next six years, right? Okay, with all local money.
Next three, because we're going to start construction in 20.
Okay, in 20, yeah.
So the next three years?
Three years.
And then are we cash flowing it as we build? Or are we billing all 15 in the next three?
On this one, 10 million.
I know, that's the detail I need to ask. So.
I know you, I know local money moves projects forward quick, more quickly, but was it not eligible at all with any of the connection to 77 or?
State highway.
Yeah, is it just?
It's always eligible, road project. You can, you can put federal dollars toward any road projects. It's just that you have to jump through a lot of hoops in order for that to occur. 56 and Old Chaney is a perfect example of the process and how long it took because we used federal aid for that project. It just was years of process. So we wanted to expedite the schedule. And also, the federal share is the same, it's about 5 million a year. It hasn't changed for a while. And so we'll dedicate those funds to other projects.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say. It wouldn't have gotten us any additional money. We would have taken our $5 million and we'd have to decide where to put it.
Yeah. So, yeah, every, every road project is generally eligible for federal funding. But we decided, and the lesson learned from 56 and Old Chaney is that the process takes so long that we wanted to use local funds to make sure we were constructing this.
Timely manner.
Timely manner, yeah.
Okay.
So, little more flexibility.
One other question, how does this affect public transit? Is there, is there going to be a bus route on this or?
Just talk to them.
Today, the bus route comes down 16th Street and goes over to 14th and down to 14th Street. So we met with Star Trang last week. The route for the buses going outbound will be the same. They'll go up through the roundabout. Inbound, they'll come up through the roundabout and go through Kensington back to 16th Street. They do have a high passenger load there, so they wanted to get back before a cushion drive, which is the next thing to the north.
Who will build that connection?
This is, it's physically there.
It's just?
It's an older area. Well, no, you can see.
I can see, it's really?
Kids' Vic Tated.
Yeah.
Private roadway with a public access easement.
Does it require any improvements or is it?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Current roadway should be able to handle it. They might even place a stop somewhere in there to, as we get closer. That's the current plan.
I couldn't help noticing in the pictures that it was very leafy. Are you actually planting trees along 14th as well? Or is that just to make it look prettier?
I think we, that's kind of still one of those design details that we're working out and absolutely cost will be a consideration of those aesthetics. Yeah, no ash trees there, yeah, no emerald trees.
Leslie, you mentioned stakeholder input and you had the 42 comments at one of the meetings. Would, if you could give us a total of all this stakeholder input, do you have a number on that and?
Well, out of the 140 people that showed up, I mean, we'd had 42 comment sheets and we, you know, there were a series of questions on there. And we do have a completely breakout, I apologize, I don't have that whole breakout with me today.
Do you mean from the beginning?
From the beginning. I mean, just because what you're saying today represents a pretty big shift from sort of, I think, what we hear about how popular this is compared to all of a sudden everyone's kumbaya, loving it. So I guess what, what was that sample size?
When we started, I do remember the design competition bringing a number of remarks and comments and having lots of participants in the open house, but we can get that number?
I think we had 200 comments in that design.
It was long, yeah, it was long.
It is remarkable, intersection have to deal with. You guys have really put a lot of work into this, thank you.
Thank you. Lot of needs to be met out here, a lot of balance going on. Other questions before we jump to Thomas? He's got about 15. He's pretty fast.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, thank you, thank you both so much.
So, this is under construction, hopefully, as we said, in the winter of 19. So in the spring of 2020, it'll be on this list. But right now, this is a list of where we're going to be, some of the major projects in 2017. As Mickey mentioned, we're branded this season, Lincoln on the Move. This is an example of the updated sign that we're going to be putting out on most of our transportation improvement projects.
that we're going to be putting out on most of our transportation improvement projects. We've been doing this for a number of years. Our project signs have kind of run their life and died, and so this is an update to that, that you'll see out there. As you can see, we have a very busy map this year. We're investing a lot into our community and its infrastructure. So, in here, and I'm not going to go through them all, but here's a number of the key projects that are planned for twenty-seventeen. As always, going to our website, typing the word projects in is a big help. On the inside here, there's some, an insert, and on the back, we talk about our projects map, which this is on the web. But a key difference this year than we've been in the past, you can go in and click on one of those projects, and it'll give you a little information. It'll give you a project manager, it'll give you a little bit on what the type of the project is, some of the anticipated durations of, of the project. So that's a little more information than we've been able to give to the public in the past. Excited for that. Also, each week, it's updated a, a street closure map. And on there, first time, for the first time, we're able to click on it, and there's a little slider. So, some of our closures come and go during the day, and you can put on the slider and see them come on and pop on or pop off as well, or they're nighttime only. So, we're giving even more information on that as we've gone through it this season. So, a couple of them that I want to highlight, of course, Sixteenth Street, that's a biggie that's already started. Others that will be coming underway is Thirty-third Street from Holdridge to up north towards the railroad track there near Madison, that'll be another big one. We have three more pavement, concrete repair projects along major corridors, that being Twenty-seventh Street from Holdridge North to Superior, Superior from Twenty-seventh over to Cornhusker, and then Old Chaney there from Fortieth Street over to Highway Two. All three of those should sound very familiar to you because we've recently bid those with the Department of Roads and been in front of you with our different federal aid paperwork for those projects. A couple of them that are not ours, but we've coordinated with and been working with, is Twenty-seventh Street Interchange, Department of Roads, it's actually a Department of Roads project. They were going to rebuild the ramps on that interchange this year. And then so at the same time, we've asked them to work with us and do Twenty-seventh Street, starting at the north end of their ramps and going south to Wildcat Drive. So that way, we were able to partner with them, have one disruption as opposed to two, and have one contractor in there doing the work. Another project that the state is doing, and it goes through the area we were just talking about, but it's Warlick Boulevard, L-55W, starts at Highway Two, also known as Fourteenth Street, goes through this intersection we just talked about and diagonates down to Seventy-seventh. State will be doing that project this year. And they have just bid that. One of the things that'll be different about how they chose to phase that project is, on Fourteenth, Old Chaney up to Highway Two, they're going to phase it not for one lane in each direction, but for one direction at a time. So, I believe they're still working through details, the contractor is proposing some changes to that. But when they bid that project, Fourteenth Street northbound would be closed. You'd be able to come southbound, but you would not be able to go northbound. And then after they finished the northbound piece, they would flip-flop over and close southbound, but have new lanes for the, the northbound people to drive on. So that's one thing to be aware of with that, that when they start that project, and we're going to be working with them to try to make sure we get the word out as much as we can, that'll be a big change for people's driving patterns in that area of town as we do that. They are going to mill an overlay through our project area. The reason for that is, we do know it's going to be three years before we can get out and construct this, maybe a little longer.
Sorry, which one are you talking about?
And we don't want to end up with.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, which project are you talking about now? Three years?
The state's Warlick project. So, we don't want to end up like we did on Fifty-sixth Street where it had absolutely shelled out and fallen apart before we could get the construction underway. So we are doing a lighter treatment through that area, but nevertheless, we are improving that surface instead of just skipping over it totally, because we don't believe it will hold up in the next three years. So we do need to do something out there, and we are working with the state and coordinated with them on our limits, and they're doing a lesser treatment in that area to tide us over until we can start this project that we were talking about. So, with that, I will let you take a look, ask me any questions you have about upcoming projects.
John? Yeah, tell us a bit more about the Fourteenth Street's permanent safety improvements of the roundabout and vicinity, is that correct?
Sure, sure. Well, as you know, we had some chain link fence that we put up with some slats in it to do the visual part of it. We put some white candlesticks up to, to neck down and narrow up the lanes there. And we have decided that that's been a big success. In fact, we went one point this summer, we went over a hundred days with only one crash in a hundred days. So I would say that.
Find through it.
It's, it's, I think it's working well. So, we want to improve that. You know, we don't want it to look just like a construction zone out there permanently. So we'll be putting some tack-on concrete curves and to take the place of those candlesticks. We have some plantings that will be going in and some more decorative type fence, shorter fence, we don't think we need as long as it is out there. That's one of the lessons we learned, is you don't need the long-run blocking view, you need it just up closer at the intersection. So we're going to put some, some of that in there.
Partnership with Dunkin's.
Actually, one of the best things that have come out of this is we have a partnership with the Dunkins up there. And where actually, all of the plantings are being donated by Robert and Karen Dunkin's, and that's exciting. They are working on the plan, and so they are being coordinated with us. And as we finish up the, the hardscape of the concrete, they'll be coming right in behind us with the planning. So there will not, hopefully, be a very long gap until where that's improved, both safety-wise but visually as well, thanks to their great generosity.
What do you expect the city's cost to be on this additional work?
Um, boy, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head now, and I do not know that, John. I, we've had a lot of numbers thrown around there, and I'd rather just get that if I could.
Give us a range?
It's a lot less than the seven fifty we were talking about earlier. I know we've talked about that number a lot because that was the amount of money that we saved. You know, the Dunkins, I don't know exactly, but I'm going to say they're doing two hundred thousand worth of plantings. We're probably down around four, maybe five hundred thousand of the concrete work. And there's some, some people have noticed the, a couple of the dips that have occurred around the one box. We're going to fix those as well. So it's not just the safety improvements, but it's actually getting where we had some bad compaction taken care of as well.
Hope you send us the, what's your?
We'll send you the numbers, yeah. But this will be our first public-private partnership, and Thomas used his charm on the Dunkins to get this going. So, really, really thankful for that.
Larry doesn't believe me.
Yeah.
He doesn't believe me.
No, not a charming-looking Dunkin'.
What other questions do you have? I know you have a two o'clock meeting, so I don't want to add a little bit, but we wanted to give you a picture of the roads planned for this.
Are these phone numbers for citizens to have if they have issues or what?
Yeah, those are numbers on the signs posted on the project site. So if you're driving through a project, and you have a question, have a concern.
And they're direct numbers.
Direct numbers to somebody at the city, direct number to somebody in the contractor's group.
And we thought at least we could say thank you to the citizens for a road investment that they're, they're putting in us, so. All right.
So I'm debating whether it would be good to put your city council person's name and number on there, depending on what part of the city.
Maybe direct, direct cell phone number?
Would you like a direct number, your, your direct number?
Districted people, yeah.
I give my direct number out freely.
I like that.
Districted people only.
District is great.
Districted.
Wait till eight May to put those up.
When we get the calls, we will send them, you know, maybe, or, or vice versa. All right.
It's kind of like, let us know how we drive, let us know how we're driving.
Exactly. All right, thank you very much for your time and listening today.